We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, February the 6th, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Howard?
Here.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, if you will, please let's stand together as our county attorney will lead us in prayer, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh Infinite One, your love for us is great. You are rich in mercy. Then you're here to us and hear our prayers. Draw near to us this day and allow us to experience your generous and forgiving embrace and to receive your manifold kindness. Then may we respond with the faith of our hearts and not just the ideas from our heads, for nothing we can conceive in our minds will come anywhere near to the devotion you desire of us. Help us to trust you with our innermost being and not just rely on the work of your hands, for the tasks you set before us are best accomplished when we yield our wills to yours and align our efforts with your grace and plan. We are what you have made us to be. We are each unique witnesses to your handiwork, created to do the good work you have called us to do. In your name we offer this prayer.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We want to welcome each of you here this evening to the Board of Commissioners meeting. To those that may be viewing online, we welcome you also. We would ask for anyone that's in attendance that would have their cell phones, if you would, please let's make sure that they are on vibrate or off to not disrupt this meeting. Commissioners, also this evening, we have Commissioner Hunt, who has joined us remotely. The procedure for this evening, per our bylaws, is all votes will be by roll call this evening, just to make you aware, so she can adequately participate in this meeting. Commissioners, you have there before you your agendas. Are there any items that you desire to add or pull from this evening's agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda as is.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Is any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, the first item we have before us, Commissioners, is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair?
There's no one that signed up on any topic that's on the agenda.
Okay. Any citizen that came in late that desires to sign up? All right, not seeing no one, we'll go to item two, which is the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have there before you the January 17th, 2023 regular session minutes, tax releases and refunds, the solid waste disaster debris contracts budget amendment, solid waste emergency repairs budget amendment, the emergency services side scan sonar budget amendment, the convention center contracted services budget amendment, and then the wall that heals budget amendment. Are there any consent agenda items that you desire to pull this evening?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'll just say kudos to Convention Center for, again, another good problem to have with their business, military balls being up, events being up, and our last thing was the alcohol, because they've sold so much. And now we have an increase here, so I like to see that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. The first item we have on the departmental matters this evening is tax, the report of unpaid taxes, tax lien advertisement date, and a reevaluation 2023 update. Mr. Leslie Young, our tax administrator, if you will, please come forward. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, Vice Chairman Booker, and Craven County Commissioners. Thank you for having me tonight. I have two matters to present. The first one is in compliance with North Carolina General Statute 105-369. There are two items in this statute that I am to first report the amount of delinquent tax amount for tax year 2022, and then Chairman Jones, I'll need to ask for approval to advertise the delinquent taxpayers in the newspaper. So first, I'd like to, I'm going to give you six numbers, because any time I pull numbers, I always like to compare to see how we are. But the first item of business tonight is to report the delinquent tax amount for tax year 2022. That dollar amount is $2,45,137. We are, as of today, at a tax collection rate of 96.18%. So how does that compare to last year? I want you to be mindful that last year was our first year to recognize the gap billing, okay? All right, so this time last year, we had a delinquent tax amount of $2,559,181.34, with a tax collection rate of 95.16. Now, this next number for February of 2021 that I reported for tax year 2020, this is what I'm very excited about for what I'm reporting to you tonight. The delinquent tax amount from three years ago, two years ago, was $2,134,981.13, with a tax collection rate of 95.8. The reason I like tonight's numbers is because that one that I just reported to you did not include the gap billing, okay? And so we are much further ahead, much better positioned for this time, for this year, okay? Chairman?
Could you explain the gap bill for the audience?
The gap bill is a general statute that was enforced, and in 2017, we finally had the Tax Department to where it could start to capture a gap bill. The gap bill, by definition, is very simple, that any time that your car or motor vehicle was to be registered, you know, it's on an annual and calendar basis, and if you don't renew your vehicle for however many months until you do renew, there's a gap in that time, okay? So you are then charged, and this is by statute statewide, you are charged for those months that it was not registered, okay, with DMV. Does that give enough clarification, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions about the numbers tonight, Chairman Jones, I need to seek approval to advertise in the New Bern Sun Journal, and that will be for Tuesday, April 11th. I have since learned that the New Bern Sun Journal does not advertise on Sundays and Mondays. I originally had it scheduled for Monday, April 10th.
All right, Commissioners, you heard the request. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? And the motion is to order the tax collector to advertise the liens for the 2022 in the Sun Journal on April 10th, 2023. Here no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
It's actually Tuesday, April 11th, she said, right?
Tuesday, April 11th, yes, ma'am.
She had to change the dates. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. All right, and now a reevaluation update.
Yes, sir. I wanted to take this opportunity, since I'm before you, to just give an update, since this is our year for the countywide revaluation. For tonight, I just want to give a brief update. Every week, I meet with Jack and Jean, every week, specifically for a revaluation update. And in conversation, we thought it would be best to report in detail at your next meeting, February 20th, and I'll have lots of details and a lot of where we are and some of the improvements that we've made for this revow. And so tonight, what I'd like to do is just give you a brief two-part. One is how does the calendar look for the rest of the month of February concerning revow, and then also that anticipated where we are for today, the countywide overall average increase in value, okay? So let's first take the calendar. Today is Monday, February 6th. The next date of significance will be Tuesday, February 14th, that is a week from tomorrow. That will be the last day that values will be certified. That'll be the last day that appraisers will wind up their valuation. Because on Wednesday, February 15th, I will be sending the file from the Tax Department over to our print vendor. They have let me know that they need the file by February 15th in order to print and mail the revaluation notices on February 27th, okay? So after February 15th, I will then come back Monday, February 20th, and give you a very detailed, let the right hand know what the left hand is doing when it comes to revaluation, okay, many of those details. Monday, February 27th, revaluation notices will mail. Tuesday, February 28th, all values will be made public on our GIS web site, and based on the other mailings from this print vendor, I anticipate the revaluation notices to be in the mailboxes by lunchtime on Wednesday, March 1st. I think that carries us through enough to where I'll give more details once I'm back before you on February 20th. Okay, lastly, I want to preface, because I've got to make this abundantly clear, before I report this number, the percentage increase in valuation is a comparison of the 2022 valuation to where we are as of today, February 6th. It is still subject to change, because again, we have until February 14th to finalize the values. This is an average. This is not an across-the-board number. This is the overall county average, okay? Takes our highs and our lows and all in between. And as of this morning, that valuation percentage increase across the county in valuation is 36.11%, okay? That is the average for the county as a whole, okay?
Can you explain to us, if you will, I think there's been some concern amongst our Board of Commissioners, you know, we hear about across the nation, the economy is, you know, going in a different direction than what we've gone before. Home sales are declining, we read about through the Business Journal and others. Tell us what is different about Craven County versus other counties across the nation.
Quite frankly, Chairman Jones, for a neighboring county, which I'll be glad to go into detail on the 20th, but I can tell you for neighboring counties, we are right in line. And in fact, I can name other counties, larger counties than Craven, who have a percentage increase larger than 36.11. We have no indication just yet that we are in a downturn economy. The sales prices are still very, very strong, okay?
All right, questions from the board?
We're not comparing year to year. We're comparing now to six years ago. So that is, you know, when I bought a house six, seven years ago, we bought it a really good deal, because there was a bit of a dip in the market. So the comparison is not year to year, it's over a timeframe, correct?
Yes, sir. Two parts. The last countywide revaluation that Craven had was in 2016. So every value from 2016 through December 31st of 2022 is based on the 2016 cost tables, okay? And just to go one step further, this countywide revaluation is, the cost tables are as of January 1 of 2023, and our revaluation cycle will end on December 31st of 2027, because our next countywide revaluation will be in '28.
Okay, other questions from the board? Commissioner Hunt, do you have anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. One last thing I would just say to make sure that all of our citizens understand this, and this is what we want to try to make sure we share with everybody in this county over the next few months. Even though, when you get your valuation, your properties are going to go up, and what we're being told, what matters is what this Board of Commissioners do with the tax rate. And, you know, that doesn't mean that just because you got it, you know, that it's going to be the 56 cent, like it is today, you know, and you start doing the math. I can't afford that. I'll have to leave the county myself. But that's going to be the big decision that this board, as we go through this budget and we look at what the valuation is across the county. So I understand people being concerned. I'm going to be concerned. I am concerned. I got a lot of properties. But at the end of the day, what matters is the tax rate, and that will be set by July 1, 2023. So please help us spread that message. All right, staff, you got anything you want to add? We thank you, Ms. Leslie. Appreciate all you and your staff do, and I know it's been a crunch time, and definitely the next few weeks will be, I know. So, but thank you.
Thank you for this evening, and I will see you back on February 20th for a much more detailed update.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioners, item four is a Soil and Water Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program Award. We have with us Mr. Patrick Baker. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, good evening, board. First part of this is going to be just a little bit of a recap from last meeting, last time I was here. Craven Soil and Water Conservation District was notified by the North Carolina Division of Soil and Water Conservation of a Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program Award in the amount of $388,939. These funds are intended to remove stream debris from a 2.9 mile segment of Swift Creek between Butler Ford Road and North Carolina Highway 118. Strap funds are intended to reduce flooding by removing stream debris across the state's waterways through proactive efforts rather than reactive following storm events, like our past hurricane recovery funding. Under this program, the extracted debris must be removed from the 100-year floodplain or processed in such a manner that the debris would not pose a risk of re-entering the stream during a subsequent flooding event. And these funds, this is 100% grant funded, it requires no county match. So the update to this is, on December 22nd, 22, staff published a request for proposals for debris removal contractors. The proposals were due back in by January 20th, 23. We received three proposals. After review and rating by our review team, we request the Board of Commissioners award the strap contract to J&amp;J Environmental LLC. The allocated construction budget for this project is $326,349. J&amp;J Environmental's bid came in at $186,200, which will allow us the ability to move upstream on Swift Creek to perform an additional $140,149 worth of work. At this time, we request the Board of Commissioners award this contract to J&amp;J Environmental LLC for a not-to-exceed amount of $326,349.
All right, before we entertain that motion, I want Commissioner Mark, this is in your district, do you have any questions?
I have no questions on this.
Okay, any other Commissioners? All right, here none. Do we have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the contract to J&amp;J Environmental, and as you heard, not to exceed $326,349. It is no county match to this. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. And now, up on the screen, you'll see here, this is a map showing our project area that we were going to tackle first. Of course, it is about a 2.9, almost three-mile section between 118 and Butler Ford Road. If you flip to the next slide picture, this is at 118 Bridge. This is one reason why we chose this location, because there's a debris, about what I could call a log jam there. And so that was one reason why we picked this area to begin with. So, now, like we said, we're going to have some leftover funding, so we can either go upstream, downstream, and we can go to other areas with this if we need to. So, and some more funding may be available here in the very near future. So we're going to be keeping our eyes open for that.
I have a question.
Okay.
Has the mud completely covered the water there? Would there be water under the mud that we see?
Yes. And what you're seeing there, you're seeing floating logs, limbs, just trash, a lot of bottles, drink bottles. There's a lot of stuff comes down Swift Creek out of...
It's bottlenecked right there.
I hate to say that, but that's where it's...
Another county.
It's what?
An adjoining county.
Oh.
Yeah. But now, that was pretty thick stuff right there. And if we don't get that out, it's just going to get worse, and more floating stuff will pile on top of it, and it'll dam the whole creek off there.
I'd like to congratulate you and your department for what you've done. We started this about eight years ago, 10 years ago, and since then, it certainly has helped when we had a hurricane. We don't have the problems that we had in the future. And as we go through each district, we try to clean up all these lakes, and it certainly has helped in the way...
Yes, sir. Now, did you have that last map? Okay, all right. Well, anyway, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. All right, next, Commissioners, we have appointments. Under appointments, you have pending, you see the Emergency Medical Services, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the Voluntary Agriculture District, District 6. Are there any applicants for any of these pending? Here none, we will move to current. You have the Craven Aging Planning Board. You have Ms. Gardner, who does not seek reappointment. Do we have any nominations for that tonight?
I don't have one tonight, but I will have one by next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Smith, we will defer consideration to the next meeting. Next would be the Craven County Planning Board. You have Mr. Johnny Robinson, who does seek reappointment. Commissioner Mitchell?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Robinson for reappointment.
Okay, we have the name of Johnny Robinson for reappointment nominated. Are there any additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we will accept Mr. Robinson by acclamation. Next would be the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. You have two appointments there. Both seek reappointment. Mr. Keith Morris is the first from Township 1. Commissioner Mark?
I would approve him.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Keith Morris. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we would accept him by acclamation. Next would be Mr. Michael Paul from Township 7.
I nominate Mr. Paul.
All right, we have a nomination of Mr. Paul. Are there any additional nominations? Here none, we would accept him by acclamation. Next, you have the Emergency Medical Service Advisory Council. You have there Mr. CJ Charlie Hill from Coast City EMS, who is the new captain, replacing Ms. Jean Matthews. That is in my district. I would ask that we would reappoint Mr. Charlie Hill. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we would accept Mr. Hill by acclamation. Next would be the Fireman's Relief Fund. The first one is Mr. Therry McCabe from Township 5. I would ask this evening if we would defer consideration of this. I would ask this evening if we would defer consideration of this.
Yeah, I'd like to defer that.
Okay, Commissioner Mark has recommended, thank you. Next would be Mr. Carl Jarman from Township 9, Fire Department. Township 9 is in District 2 also. I would ask for his reappointment. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we would accept Mr. Jarman. Next would be Mr. Roger Wetherington, also from Township 9. I would again ask for his reappointment. Are there any additional nominations from Commissioners? Here none, we would, Mr. Wetherington will be by acclamation. On the next page there, you have the Fire Tax Commissioners. All have agreed that if appointed again, they are willing to serve. The first one was Mr. Timothy Mason from Township 2. Commissioner Mark?
Approve.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Mason. Are there additional nominations? Here none, he accepted by acclamation. Next would be Mr. Shane Turney from Township 8. Commissioner Mitchell?
Recommend.
All right, we have a nomination of Mr. Turney. Additional nominations? Here none, we would accept Mr. Turney. Next would be Mr. Allen Gaskins, Township 1. Commissioner Mark?
Approve.
All right, we have a nomination of Mr. Gaskins. Any additional nominations? Here none, we would accept Mr. Gaskins by acclamation. Next would be Dallas Brown, Township 8, West New Bern. Commissioner Mitchell?
Recommend it.
All right, we have a nomination of Mr. Brown. Any additional nominations? Here none, we would accept Mr. Brown by acclamation. Next would be Mr. Chris Wetherington, Township 2. Commissioner Mark?
Approve.
All right, we have the nomination of Mr. Wetherington. Any additional nominations? Here none, we would accept Mr. Wetherington by acclamation. Next would be Mr. Howard Carrier from Township 9. I would ask that he be reappointed. We have additional nominations? Here none, we would accept Mr. Carrier. And also, Mr. Chris Restor, I would also ask for his reappointment. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we would accept him. Next would be the Fire Tax, also Fire Tax Commissioners Board applicant Donna Shannon. This is Township 6, Mr. Howard.
I nominate Donald Shannon.
Okay, we have that nomination of Mr. Donald Shannon. Are there additional nominations? Here none, we would appoint him. Commissioners, are there any other current that we have overlooked? Here none, you see the terms expiring in March, please take note of those also. Any additional nominations to bring before the board this evening? Here none, we will next go to the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Eric Grady. Good evening, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. I have three items for your consideration this evening. All three involve property owned by the county jointly with the City of New Bern. Each of the properties was acquired through the tax foreclosure process, and as we have customarily done with these, we've let the city go first, and the city has approved these sales, and each of them would be before you for consideration. So the first item is 2706 McKinley Avenue with a parcel ID number of 8-037-061-C. This is a final approval. The board gave preliminary approval previously. It's been out for upset bids, and it's back before you for final approval. The initial offer amount was $2,500. That was the final amount. The past due taxes and the cost of foreclosure were originally $3,219.12, and the tax value of the property is $4,500. I do recommend that the board consider giving final approval to this.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving conveyance of parcel number 8-037-061-C. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
The second item is 1,000 Neuse, it's got Neuse Avenue with a parcel ID number of This is also before you for final approval. The initial offer amount was $3,000. It was put out for upset bids, there were none, so the $3,000 is the final bid. The original taxes and cost of foreclosure were $7,144.75. The tax value on this parcel would be $6,000, and as with the first one, I do recommend that the board consider giving final approval.
Moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution approving conveyance of parcel number 8-015-023. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
And Commissioners, the third and final item involves 115 Hillmont Road with a parcel ID number of 8-219-006. This is before you for final approval. The initial amount offered was $7,500. That was put out for upset bids. There were none, so the $7,500 became the final amount. The original past due taxes and cost of foreclosure were $6,349.65. This parcel has a tax value of $15,000. As with the other two, I suggest that the board consider giving this one final approval.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, that is to adopt the resolution approving conveyance of parcel number 8-219-006. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
That concludes my report, yes, sir.
Appreciate it. All right, next, Commissioners, we have item seven, which is the petition of citizens for general topics. Vice Chair Booker, do we have anyone who has signed up?
We have two people. The first one is Brandon Daniels.
Okay, Mr. Daniels, for those that will be speaking this evening, if you will come to the platform, if you don't mind, as you begin this evening, please state your name again for the record, so it can be recorded and your address. And also, again, we do have three minutes for speaking. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. So, good evening. My name is Brandon Daniels, and I'm here on behalf of my family, to speak on behalf of my family and other concerned residents on Bear Hole Road in the Vanceboro area. So, we're here to let you know tonight that we're in a fight. We're in a fight for broadband internet access. As in this modern time we live in, it is important, and it has proved itself as a necessity and not a luxury. So, we are currently vulnerable, right now, to crimes of theft, crimes of trespassing, which some of our residents have recently experienced in the past two weeks. Most efficient and effective surveillance systems that are sold nowadays depend on high-speed internet access. We have government employees that are tasked to work from home from time to time, and are not able to depend on ViaSat and HughesNet, those of our satellite options. We have children that have no reliable option for remote learning, which we ran into over the time of COVID, and my children were left behind. We should know that students who lack broadband access are at a clear disadvantage compared to their peers that have broadband access. As parents and protectors of our properties, we are constantly stressed over the lack of internet access in our area. We are currently in contact with the North Carolina Broadband Infrastructure Team representatives and Optimum representatives as well. We were recently quoted close to $66,000 in upfront construction fees by Optimum, which proves to be very unrealistic and frustrating for us to raise as average Craven County residents. So, this brings me to my conclusion. We are calling on our Craven County officials to take action, to look into our options as it relates to funding a broadband expansion project for our road. We are hopeful, as your constituents, that you will do everything in your power to assist in this effort to light up our homes with internet access. This will allow our community to improve its level of safety, security, and access to education. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ruth Cooper. I live at 1022 Colleton Way in Trent Woods. My husband, Dog, and I moved here a year ago from Cincinnati. We love Craven County and New Bern. One thing we don't love is litter. While I rarely see litter in my area of Trent Woods, I'm surprised at how much I see in other places in Craven County. While the county now does four clean sweeps a year, I don't think we have an organized program to prevent littering and illegal dumping of trash. Many people facing litter-filled communities feel disappointed about the state of their community and wish it were cleaner. However, they hesitate to remove litter from their community because of concerns such as disease spread, injury from hidden needles, and they also feel a sense of futility in picking up litter, as so much quickly reappears. While being outside is one of the best ways to boost our mental health, that effect is dampened when the outdoors is trashed with plastic and litter. Recently, Pitt County announced and publicized an anti-litter campaign called Litter Free for You and Me. It has three stages. Part one focuses on education. Part two will involve banners hung at county buildings and a fourth-grade litter cleanup challenge. Part three, tarpet or ticket, will focus on educating the public and enforcement of fines for littering, illegal trash dumping, and unsecured loads, which can lead to potentially dangerous situations. They will even provide tarps to truck drivers so they can secure their loads. Almost two years ago, the Sun Journal had an article that said, "Your Stephen Astor, Chip Hughes, Greg Murphy, and Steve Tyson are concerned about litter along our roadways." For 35 years, Texas has had a "Don't Mess With Texas" anti-litter campaign. Willie Nelson and others have done public service songs, and they've reduced roadway litter by over 55%. My husband and I took part Saturday in the clean sweep. We picked up eight big orange trash bags of litter, and folks from my church have gone along the senior tower on Walt Bellamy, but I don't plan to continue to pick up other people's trash. People need to know that littering is illegal, that it has consequences, and that it's not okay. Perhaps signs that say, "No littering, violators will be prosecuted," would help. It's time for Craven County to spend some time, money, and energy on an anti-litter campaign. It will save money in the long run. Perhaps the county of New Bern could join forces to help decrease littering, trash dumping, and unsecured roads, because it's simple, just don't litter. I've got about 170 of these green t-shirts, if anyone wants one, and I've got plastic litter bags for cars, and I just think signage might help. Some places I see an ancient sign that says, "No dumping," but it doesn't say violators will be prosecuted, and there's a lot of dumping that goes on, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is that it, Vice Chair Booker? All right, thank you both. All right, next, Commissioners, we have item eight, is the County Manager's Report. Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Busy three weeks since we last met. Attended a legislative breakfast in Kinston with Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Hunt. Got to hear, I believe, from three different senators and one representative, Commissioner Smith, that were there with us that morning.
Commissioner Howard was there as well.
Okay, Commissioner Howard was with us, too. You know, looking.
Oh, he was.
Okay. Looking at the priorities for the state legislative session, obviously Medicaid expansion's going to be a big-ticket item. I asked you to be mindful of that. Of course, the expansion, in some ways, is helpful to folks, but in our situation, we are going to be responsible for qualifying people for Medicaid. So it's another work burden on the DSS with Mr. Merritt. So he's been speaking with the legislative branch, you know, about the challenges that DSS departments have and what resources they may need if that should happen. Obviously, looking at the state budget, a little too early to decide on that. They're attempting to set spending levels in the next few weeks, months, and then we'll get into that part later on. Talked a lot about DOT funding, Commissioner Mark on Highway 70. We know that there's challenges out there, still trying to figure out what's the best source of revenue in the future for DOT. Obviously, with the gas tax and its challenges, what are the new options there? Commissioner Booker, I attended a C-1A meeting last week at the hospital. Heard a great presentation from the president, Michael Smith, on what's going on over at the hospital. A lot of great work. We do have, wish Jeff Wood was here tonight, I'd give him kudos, a really, really fantastic 2022 in economic development in Craven County. I think Jeff told me the other day, in the last two, two and a half years, about $35 million in investment, 700 jobs in Craven County, and that's a big deal. That's a big deal. So we're excited about that. Heard Mr. Brandon speak earlier about broadband. We did finally receive the Great Grant contracts last week. We reviewed those with our county attorney. Believe we're on a clear path forward on that. Mr. Bennett has set some time up to meet with Brightspeed next week, and we hope to finalize that contract, get it before you, either at your second February meeting or your first March meeting. Challenge with folks like Mr. Brandon, his family, are they don't fall in the Great Grant area, nor do they fall in what's called the Ardolph area, which was the federal auction of space, where, I believe it was Optimum got that space. So they're building very close to him, he's just the doughnut hole in the middle. So with Mr. Daniels, what we're going to look at, number one, is talking to Optimum individually about his neighborhood and what options they have. $66,000 to hook up one house is not feasible, just can't be done. So we're working on that, on the same thing. We're also working with the broadband office and different programs outside of the Great Grant that may provide that last mile, and that's what he is, he's the final mile. So we got to get it from where it is now to his home. So we'll continue to work with him and his family, appreciate him being here tonight, and continue following up with him on that. As you may notice, I want to thank Mr. Bennett. We got two brand-new projectors in here, albeit they may be the largest projectors I've ever seen. They might have been attached to a balloon once, I don't know. It's a joke, I'm sorry. A little too soon, too soon. But we do have it, and hope you noticed the higher-quality video we have in here tonight. And lastly, had a great time last week with the department heads. We had our all-hands meeting to talk about budget, and we kicked that process off. Departments are working very diligently right now, preparing their annual budget, which they will submit at the end of this month, where the county management team will take it from there and provide you a balanced budget and a recommendation in May. With that, Mr. Chairman, that is my comments. If you have questions for me.
All right, any questions from the board? Thank you. All right, next, we will go to Commissioners' reports. We'll start with Commissioner Mark, then go to Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Mark?
Okay. The county manager mentioned Highway 70. I have a meeting, and I guess he'll be at it with me on the 21st, I believe, of this month, if I'm not mistaken. At that time, we'll take up some of the issues we have with it. In addition to that, I had a town hall meeting in Fairfield Harbor, unable to attend. Gene Hodges ran it for me, and he had the Economic Development Director there, and Kelly from Corts, and they went over, he went over the budget and the rebal. And the feedback I got, the meeting was a very good success. They had about 30 people there, and I will be holding more in the future. Let me see. I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And for your permission, I would like to use this time to talk about a Commissioner concern. Since 2019, the Board of Commissioners in Craven County has been increasing the resources to our animal shelter so that we could improve the medical care to the animals that are our responsibility, and to address the number of unwanted puppies and kittens that are born in Craven County. Number of strays is a concern to the general public. Many of us, me included, are animal lovers. I know everyone in the board is, I'm sure many people in this room are. I know many of our citizens are. But it is also a public health issue, and public health is a responsibility of Craven County government. It's not just the diseases that spread among pets and in our community. Diseases that go from mammal to mammal also impact livestock, and let it not be forgotten that agriculture is a big economic portion of Craven County, and it is the number-one economic sector of North Carolina itself. The key to reducing unwanted puppies and kittens and unwanted The key to reducing unwanted puppies and kittens and unwanted animals is to reducing the number who are born in Craven County. And the key to that is to make low-cost spaying and neutering services available to all citizens. Currently, we are funding a contract vet for three days a week at the animal shelter at the cost of $68,000 a year. This is simply not enough to meet the needs of this county. So I would like to make the motion to authorize the county manager and the director of the Health Department to hire a full-time vet to be the director of Craven Pamlico Animal Shelter.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to authorize the county manager to hire a full-time vet. Discussion on that, I would, first, if I could, I'd like to defer to the county manager of a cost. Do you have a cost associated with that?
Yes, sir. It's a great idea. I do, I would recommend bringing this position on as a Grade 81 on our paying classification plan. It would be called a county veterinarian, but in practice, it would be the director of the animal shelter. We would ask for authorization up to Step 10 on our paying classification plan as well, which would give you a range of $100,000 to approximately $125,000, bring that in. And we would advertise that far and wide to get the best candidates.
Okay. Commissioners, you heard the cost of it. Okay, now we open it up for discussion.
I would agree with him. I would agree with the fact that we should put a vet in there five days a week.
Okay, Vice Chair Booker.
About four months ago, someone dumped a almost newborn kitten at my farm, and my wife insisted that it be kept alive. So we've been feeding and taking care of this kitten, and I didn't know if it was a girl or a boy, but I did know that it was very, very small and young when we got it. So I spoke to the animal shelter and said, "What's the plan for spaying or neutering a kitten?" That's literally a stray cat. And so anyway, I did take it in. They did take care of it. They gave it a rabies shot, and it was a girl. So she's back permanently on my property now, unfortunately. She eats. So anyway, it worked very smoothly. So the problem is they can't keep up with, and I think a lot of people aren't even aware of this. So if we can have a full-time veterinarian there and advertise it, I believe we will see a, within a reasonable time, I think we'll see a downturn in the number of unwanted pregnancies in our, so again, I support that plan.
All right. No, not, but thank you for your interest, but this is just to the board, but thank you. All right, other Commissioners, you have any comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Hunt.
For clarification, did I hear correctly that this veterinarian would be the director as well as performing all medical needs?
That, that...
Yes, that is correct. That is part of my motion.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Not really a question. I'd say kudos to Commissioner Hunt and Commissioner...
My name's Mitchell.
Mitchell. I was thinking Liner for some reason.
She's not here.
Bringing the issue to the forefront. It's an important issue for a lot of people, and we've had speakers for the last few months here. So thank you guys for bringing this up and pushing this issue to the forefront.
Well, Commissioner Howard, this has been a topic in the county government for at least the last four years. So it's not a new issue. We've struggled to address it, and I think this is the best long-term solution.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no more discussion, I do have a question for county manager.
Your name is Lyderyn.
By making this motion this evening that's on the floor, do we also need to appropriate any funding for it, or you're just creating the position at this time? What do you need?
Sir, we would create the position now, and then we would work through probably some lapsed salary in the animal shelter. We've had some vacancies there, and I think would prepare a more robust budget for you that you would consider in May for next year. I think we can pretty much take care of it. If not, we'll be back to you.
Okay, but you...
There's a lot we can handle inside.
But you've got what you need this evening in this motion to go forward with this? Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think it should be noted that we had a vet there one day a week, and then we increased it to three days a week, and now we're ready with the money to go five days a week.
Correct. And I will say, Commissioner Mitchell, she was instrumental in getting us two, three days a week. The board supported in the last budget, and I commend the board of Commissioners for doing that. All right, you have the motion before you. No further discussion. I want to ask the clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. All right, thank you. All right, anything else, Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, we thank you. Commissioner Howard.
I had a town hall January 31st. First, I want to thank Billy Wilks for showing up, kind of introducing to my residents. We had 65 people show up at the township firehouse, and we had 100 people online. Someone kind of messaged me last minute, "Can you stream this?" And I was like, "Well, we'll see if it's actually useful." So I begged my wife to do it and hold that up for an hour and a half, and so she did it. And we had over 100 people tune in to the streaming. A lot of thank yous for having the town hall, so we're planning another at the end of March. We did talk about, of course, the golf course, which was a big issue. So I'd like to thank Mr. Grady and Chad from Planning for helping with that. It's going to be a continuous issue. We continue to kind of address. Obviously, the reavow was a big topic there. We talked about, you know, where we're going, what to expect, kind of some of the things our tax person went over earlier. Water pressure was an issue, but only briefly because someone had too much pressure, which, you know, and Jack's 18 years here, and I think it was the first time he ever heard that complaint. But we're right next to the water plant, and someone, that was their concern. I'm like, "Well, of all concerns to have, I like a lot of water pressure." But we talked about the new park, obviously. Roads, private versus public came up, and of course, the Havelock Bypass, which is, I was elected vice chair of the RPO, so we talked about that being about 62% complete, I think, is what they said during that meeting, and they were expecting that to be totally complete by the end of 2023. But when it, I don't quote the DOT on those kind of dates, sometimes they, but that one really looks to be ahead of schedule, so I'm optimistic. And the James City one, they said like 30% complete, so I don't know what, I'm not going to quote that one either. The last part of our meeting dealt with, Sheriff Hughes came, kind of just went over what he's doing, drug enforcement, those kind of things. Obviously, there were a lot of questions there, too. So it was just really a great town hall, and we're planning another one for the end of March, and I think Representative Tyson's going to join us. And I would anticipate 100 or more. We're going to try to advertise better in your area, James, Michael, Mr. Howe, and Rayner, and we'll invite you to that, too. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Yes, sir. I would like to take a moment to speak to the issue of food, hunger, and food deficiency among seniors in our communities. It seems that we all are aware that hunger is a big issue for people 60 and over. And when I speak to hunger, I'm not saying that you don't have a piece of bread on the table, but I'm saying you don't have the funds to buy the nutritious food that you need for your good health and comfort. For people 60 and over, we find that to happen often, and people, older folk, because they spend their money with medicines and electric bills and things that are necessary for people that are homegoing. In 2020, 5 million seniors aged 60-plus dealt with issues of hunger. The East Carolina Council is currently sponsoring a grocery reimbursement program, and that program provides $500 reimbursement to people 60 and over if you present your receipts. It will not pay for anything other than food. Your receipt may have something other than food on it, but they will just scratch that off, and you must have, you can have up to $500. You do not have to have $500 to turn your receipts in, but once you reach the amount of $500, you can keep turning them in until you meet $500, and you can get reimbursed. At this point, in Craven County, we have 410 active participants in the program, and by January 31, we had received 900, they had received 9,510. That's a great deal of money to help our citizens. And this program is not just for Craven County. Applicants in other surrounding counties, I will not name the other counties because we are concerned specifically with Craven County. Anyone in other counties are, like Joan County, and I said I wouldn't name them, now I'm naming them, Joan, but any of the surrounding counties can apply. If you're interested and you live in Craven County, you can apply to Alyssa at the senior service building. The number is 252-638-1790. Again, seniors 60 and over, if you wish to get reimbursement for food, you can apply. It's not a difficult application, but if you need help, you can get help, and you don't have to be destitute. You just need to qualify. There are certain qualifications, and we'd like for our county to participate more. I have been handing out flyers and having other folk get out flyers, but we want everyone in our area, if you need these reimbursements, please, please apply and use these monies, because if we don't use these monies, they go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Hunt.
I don't have anything for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Booker.
Two things. Number one, Commissioner Howard mentions the James City project. A lot of people in my area, which includes James City, have been asking me what's going on. It doesn't look like they're doing anything, and I think the public needs to understand that there's a lot going on. A lot of the work to do this project is work that has to be done well before the contractors can come in and actually start building the road. The utilities that run along United States US 70 are amazing: water, sewer, broadband, electric, you name it. And the railroad is a factor here also, and they're not the most congenial people to work with. So the bottom line is, a lot of work has been done. There's a lot more that needs to be done, but I think by the end of this year, they're going to be pretty well on the way to having all the utilities moved and be ready to start actually creating the road. And I, again, assure everybody that the contractor has been, has agreed to do the majority of their work in after dark, at night, when most of us are not driving on that road. So that's number one. The second thing is, a group of us last week had an interesting visit with the Shriners, on the Shriners property, again, that is right next door to us in District 7. A lot of noise, a lot of people asking a lot of questions. We took the opportunity to go through the building. County manager, his assistant, assistant county manager, and a couple other folks, and the chairman and myself toured that building, and all I can say is, I had only been in the building once, and that was about 20 years ago, and that was only in the big auditorium. I had never been in all the other rooms. The building has been destroyed. Simply stated, the hurricane really did a tremendous amount of damage, but since then, the amount of damage done by vandals, homeless people, who knows who, they've basically destroyed everything in that building that had a value, just about everything in there. It was a sad visit. We were walking on glass much of the time where they broke the lights, and just anything to just destroy whatever they could destroy. So I just wanted to make that point, that I had someone as recently as yesterday say, "I think we ought to restore that building." No, that building is not restorable. Anything is restorable at a high enough price, but the building needs to come down. I also pointed out while we were in there that the building doesn't have air conditioning. It was built in 1954, and there's no air conditioning in there. So it is, it's a sad situation. As we walked through, we didn't exactly have a smile on our face. So anyway, I just thought I'd make that point.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners, we have been requested to go into closed session this evening pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A and 3 to consult with attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege as it relates to a case, Patrick versus Craven County. I want to ask for a motion that we would go into closed session, but also, before we do that, I would like to take about a 10 to 15-minute recess so staff can prepare for the room and prepare the documentation to be able for us to have that. All right, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Any discussion on, yes, sir?
If we can also let the motion reflect that there is a second matter we need to discuss in closed session that has recently arisen, that would be under 143-31811A1 to preserve the confidentiality of certain information that we'll need to discuss this evening. My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
No problem. So I think Commissioner Mitchell made the motion, Commissioner Mark seconded it, something like that, but...
Will you amend?
I'll amend.
You amend it for that?
I amend my second.
All right, any discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. All right, we'll take about a 15-minute recess.